...taping as well as live streaming on our YouTube channel and recording. Recording will be available on our YouTube channel. Thank you for bearing with us while we are running behind from the executive session. At this time, if we could please rise and for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to introduce our school committee members and administration attendants this evening. On my left, Mr. Dan Marino, Mrs. Mayville, Mrs. Davenport, Ms. Martelli, Ms. Superintendent, Mr. Powers. On my right, Mr. Barber, Mrs. King, Mr. Dolan, who's in the corner there, and Mr. Fitzgibbon, and myself, the Chair, Mrs. Conrad. Also in attendance, we have Mrs. Tola Babalola, Mrs. Dersch, is Mr. Schatz, sorry? Oh, Mr. Schatz. Mrs. McDougall and other administration team. At this point, we'll move into community emails and correspondence. Emails that were received through the Chair this month. I received an email or we received an email recognizing the Bridgewater High School staff and their work they did creating a plan for a student with medical complexities. An email from a parent regarding creating a safety plan for a student. An email regarding the Bridgewater Middle School Vice Principal Communication. Email regarding a book banning form in Bridgewater. And then also, I would like to recognize the BR High School Marching Band. And that took first place in their regional competition this past weekend. Congratulations to them at this point, Mr. Powers.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to echo that last comment you made. I was able to attend the US Band Competition hosted this past Saturday night at the high school out on the stadium field. We had 10 high schools from across Massachusetts, actually one from Connecticut. And it was a great event. Our team did come in first. I think that was the first place that they had received. They do travel around throughout the fall to various high schools across the state and across the northeast competing in these US Band Competitions. How we hosted our first one last year and obviously our second one this year. And I know the feedback just from the US Bands Organization has always been very positive. There were several events going on while the bands were competing. They had food trucks there, concession stands, fifty-fifty raffles. The fifty-fifty raffle, if you were there at the end, I think it was about $5,000. I think they said yes, yeah. So hopefully somebody got their ticket. So it was a great event. So I do want to just recognize them as well and say job well done. I also wanted to recognize a former graduate and two current seniors. Logan De Noon, who was a 23 graduate and current seniors. Derek Islas and Noah McCarron. They were named as commended students in the 2024 National Merit Program. They were recognized for their performance on the PSATs. This recognition is a little delayed. Word didn't get to Ms. Watson until this fall. So the PSATs and National Merit Scholarship Program was a little delayed by refining the high school. But we are excited that those three individuals were recognized for their exceptional performance on the PSATs and the qualifying test. So again, over 34,000 students were recognized nationwide and we were fortunate to have three of them. So job well done to those three individuals.
At this point, I will move into public comment. The school committee welcomes information, concerns, and opinions for those attending the meeting. If those wishing opportunity to speak ensure compliance with open meeting law and other legal obligations and avoid disruption of the meeting. The committee will not engage with the speaker or with one another during deliberation on comments as they are presented during comment periods. It is at the discretion of the committee that they may schedule issues raised by a speaker for deliberations at a future meeting. If you would like a personal response, please email the committee or Mr. Powers directly following me. The Chair will now open public comment for a period of 12 minutes per policy BNDH and would ask anyone who wishes to speak to please approach the podium. Provide your name and address. Respectfully ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. And your three minutes is up and you still have not finished. I will ask you to submit your thoughts or script to our recording secretary, Ms. McDougall, and she will distribute those to the committee for our review. Is there anyone who would prefer comment?
My name is Michelle Senna, 320 Cherry Street. Good evening, Mr. Powers, Madam Chair, and school committee members. I'm going to talk as fast as I can. As budget planning begins, I would like to discuss a need in the music department specifically at the high school. We are at a pivotal time where action must be taken. We currently have programs at the high school which exist this year because of parents and volunteers, including marching band, which affects 50 Kids Triumph, a music honor society with 21 students. These are both vital and active groups, both of which would not exist this year if not for parent and administrative involvement. Also, the ordering, fitting, dispersing, and storage of the new marching band uniforms has all been coordinated by parent volunteers. Individuals are stepping into roles that are not meant to fill, they are not meant to fill to ensure students have what they need, and it's not sustainable long term. Our choral program, which used to be upwards of 100 students, now has 11. Our concert band is only 14. The DESI report card from 2022 had BR with a below-average rating for accessibility to the arts, and we are far below Dart schools and music enrollment numbers. As we are seeing, what we are asking of our high school music director is also not sustainable long term. Whether it's burnout or simply just too much, it is more than one person can successfully handle. And now we're in a position where we are scrambling to find people to make sure vital programs continue. Their directors in the lower grades are building the program and doing so successfully. We have 152 choral students in grades five through eight and 90 to 100 students in band working their way up to the high school, and this does not include Rainham. We do not even have a dedicated chorus teacher at the high school, and the effect is obvious in the numbers. The band teacher is expected to do both band and chorus. However, as one parent noted, you would not take golf lessons from a baseball player simply because they are both athletes. There needs to be more attention given to the needs of this department so that the right people are in the right roles and have the support they need to teach and support our kids. The music department being a feeder program, it is also only, one of the only departments without a department head. Directors from different grades and schools are meant to build something without a leader. The department needs someone to assist with the multitude of administrative duties. We need someone to bring cohesion between the lower grades and the high school. Someone who will be a leader, a support, and a supervisor of the department and coordinate curriculum. This should be a supervisory role, in my opinion. Someone to monitor and review the multiple music accounts, which have their own purpose. Issues continually arise regarding the various music accounts as there is not a clear understanding of how the department functions. The current role of coordinator is not sufficient to meet the needs of the department, but rather a band aide. We have looked at Dart schools and provided the information. Schools like ours have two teachers or a teacher and a department head at the high school level. Not only were we below the state average with accessibility to the arts, but we have far less students enrolled in music than our Dart schools. There have been many discussions about there not being enough students enrolled in music to justify another teacher. And we debate about what comes first, the chicken or the egg? Do we wait for enough students to bring in more faculty, or do we need more faculty to engage more students? The numbers prove that the first option is not working. In these Dart schools, in addition to administrative duties and coordinating the department, the department head often teaches courses as well. I would ask the superintendent and school committee to strongly consider adding the position of a district music director with a choral background to rebuild the choral program at the high school, prepare for the band and choral students who are coming up, and give the department the attention and leadership it requires. And as an example of how things function on a day-to-day basis with one music teacher in a school our size, our kids are fortunate to have practice rooms. They are designed and built to be used. A third of the marching band seniors will be continuing music in college and will need to audition. Thirty to 40 students will be auditioning for prestigious music festivals in November. When these kids have free periods, which they do often, they can't take out their sacks or work on their solos because they can't use the practice rooms unless there is a teacher who can monitor the rooms. If the teacher is in another class or absent, there is no access.
Mrs. Senna, your time is up. If you wish to leave your script with Mrs. McDougall, she can distribute it to you.
No, I believe another mom is continuing to perform.
Thank you.
Lisa Daly, 25, Town Line Circle. We have something to help these kids succeed, and they cannot use it. Ms. Watson and several students are working on a solution, but it shouldn't have been this hard. We are in mid-October, their auditions are in a month away. It's wasted time and space, and it's not fair to our kids. Something has to give as it cannot go on the way it has been in the past year. Programs like marching band would not have happened without a parent volunteering. Triumph would not have happened without Ms. Watson taking on an additional role and parents stepping up as well. At this point, we are just plugging holes, and there needs to be a real change. And the change cannot be asking our current directors to do more. Thank you.
Are there anyone else's public comment that wishes to speak? No. Great, thank you. At this point, we will move into the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Aye.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Fitzgibbon and second by Mrs. King. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we will move to the educational reports. Our Mrs. King, do you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I attended the Student Advisory Council First Meeting of the Month with them, with Ms. Curly, who was their liaison. They went over different items that they wanted to discuss at the meeting. I also presented to them, as we have MASC, which is the Massachusetts Association of School Committee. They have something similar, which is the Mass Association of Student Representatives. They do similar things. They provide a network, they provide training workshops, monthly Zoom calls. They have a fall and a spring training, so I did provide that information to the students that it's there if they want to take that opportunity. I think the fall one, though, is like the end of the month, which was very soon. So I'm hoping maybe if we start talking about it, they'll maybe have one or two be able to attend the April training. But they also have Zoom monthly things, so if there's something comes up, I told them I wouldn't let them know, but they can, you know, listen to that. And also, it's good for them to network and get other ideas from different districts and what they're doing. And then, I don't believe they have a meeting next week, but I'll meet with them again at the beginning of next month, or November.
Our first report out would be with Noah Barber, their current chair today.
Good evening, everyone. A few weeks ago, the high school held our senior college fair. In this event, many colleges around the area set up stations in our cafeteria where students could walk around and get information about colleges that they may be interested in or applying to. It's a great way to access more information about colleges without having to go to the schools individually. At each station, a member of the college's admissions office was there to answer any questions that the students had. In addition to colleges, there are also people that were there to represent each branch of the military, as well as the police and fire departments. As well as providing some nice pre-pens, the college fair gave helpful information to guide students through the college application process. I'd like to welcome Danny Schatz next.
Good evening, everyone. So two topics to talk about today. First up was our club fair. Every year, all of our schools' club have the opportunity to show off their achievements from last year and hopefully invite new members to join. Students got the chance to either represent their club at a table or explore all the club options we have at BR. This allows students to find their people and get involved in our community. We also held a new student breakfast. Adjusting to the new school year is difficult, and especially for our new students entering the district this year. In order to help the adjustment process, the guidance office held a new student breakfast to allow students to meet new friends who are going through the same processes then. Delicious breakfast and friendly conversation was made, and our students feel welcomed to our school. And I'd actually like to welcome up Quinn Daly.
Hello, everyone, and good evening. I know the competition that took place this past weekend was our day of knowledge, but I'd like to go a little bit more in depth. This past Saturday, on October 14th, the marching band at the high school hosted a US Bands Competition where marching bands showcased their talents and their divisions to try to win. There were 10 schools who performed, and these bands were from East Bridgewater, Abington, Dayton, Rehoboth, Plainfield, Connecticut, Dennis Yarmouth, Stow-in, King Philip Regional, Blackstone Millville, BMC Durfee, and Bridgewater Rainham. The music boosters, volunteers, and others worked very hard to put on this event in order to host the many schools performing and to create a great environment for the people in the audience. Also showing their support was the principal of BR, Ms. Watson, a vice principal of BR, Mr. Lucia, and our superintendent, Mr. Powers, and many other members of the Bridgewater Rainham Regional School District to boost the energy and confidence of the marching band, who worked very hard to put on their show. The show, called Celestial Journeys, takes a listener on a journey through space and time. In the end, they pulled through with a first-place win against Durfee High School in their division. Thank you for your time. I would now like to welcome Rachel Corry up to the stand.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you are all having a great fall season so far. This month, BR had the opportunity of supporting our community, students, and staff. Around the beginning of the month, an assembly was held here where Bridging Lives had the opportunity to promote their club and share their practices and accomplishments with BR students. They discussed their purpose of helping students and acknowledged their practices put in place for the aid of BR, like their flyers presenting consequences of substance abuse. This part of the assembly left students with helpful resources and great ideas of what the club does. Additionally, the senior class and deca have teamed up to sell breast cancer awareness long-sleeve t-shirts. From each sale, $3 goes towards the National Breast Cancer Foundation. These shirts show the support that BR as a community has for the cause. I'm so happy to see that BR continues to help people in many different ways. Thank you and have a great rest of your day. I would now like to welcome Sophia King.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Committee, and Superintendent Powers. My name is Sophia King, and I'm here to speak to you about some events that recently happened at BR. Our school's robotics team, Jay J. Scream, recently went to an off-season competition called the New England Robotics Derby in Tewksbury, Massachusetts. I was given the opportunity to drive one of our robots at the competition, which was amazing, as I am the team's first second-generation driver. We were the first pick of our alliance and made it all the way to semifinals, match 10 before being eliminated. This was great practice for the upcoming season, and we have one more off-season event on October 28th in Manchester, New Hampshire. Additionally, this month, the sophomore class of 2026 have also selected their class officers. Our president is Annalisa Fernandez, our vice president is Tyler Murray, our secretary is Kate Blake, and the treasurer is Luke Cruz Santos. Thank you and have a good day. This concludes our report.
Thank you so much for our student council advisory board for presenting tonight. I look forward to next month and also our meeting. Thank you for the students here tonight. Next, we'll move on to the fourth superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the school committee, members of the audience. I wanted to provide two reports this evening. The first is a quick update on the progress towards my goals for the 23-24 school year. And the second will be an overview of the assessment and accountability data that was recently released by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. To go back to the goals, as you know, as you approved, my first goal was to oversee, it was a student learning goal, was to oversee the expansion of the iReady Diagnostic Assessment to the high school level. Working with Ms. Watson, Ms. Joyce, and Ms. Richards, we were able to identify approximately 120 students that would be administered the iReady Diagnostic Test based on their eighth-grade results. This assessment will actually be given next week. And depending on how the students do there, those students will either receive support from high school staff, the math or ELA interventionist, or be assigned the MyPath program through iReady that you may be familiar with, as many of our students are currently working on that at the KDA 8 level. So we're excited to see those results. Letters were sent home to families notifying them that their students would be taking this diagnostic assessment. My second goal was a professional practice goal, and that was to participate in the new superintendent's program. And you had the opportunity to meet my superintendent coach at one of the previous school committee meetings, Ms. Bella Wong. We've had one in-person session up in Marlboro, and we've had two virtual sessions thus far. Some of the agenda topics have been data collection, political acumen, strategic leadership, and leading with equity. We were all assigned a cohort that we typically spend either our virtual sessions with or our in-person sessions with. Currently, I'm grouped with new superintendents from Milton, Mass, Northampton, Norton, Richmond, Bill Ricker, and Chickaby. And I also have the opportunity to meet with my superintendent coach every two to three weeks, every two to three weeks when the schedule is allowed. The third goal was a district improvement goal, was to ensure alignment between school and district goals with the administrative team, as well as the school improvement plans. Mrs. Barry and I have had the chance to go around and meet with the majority of our elementary principals to review not just their assessment and achievement data, but also their own educator evaluation data as well, and their potential goals and self-assessments. So that process will continue. Obviously, we will be presenting at upcoming meetings the school improvement plans, which will obviously ensure that they are aligned to the student success plan. And lastly, another school, I'm sorry, another district improvement goal was to develop a sound fiscal budget that aligns to a student success plan. Obviously, Ms. Babalola and I have been meeting quite extensively. We started this budget development process actually back late summer, early fall, when we started to meet with representatives from both towns, their finance directors, and either the town manager or town administrator and other town officials. Just to begin to talk about forecasting for FY '25 and some of the, you know, challenges or successes that we may encounter along the way. The school and department budgets are currently due at the end of October, approximately October 27th. And from there, Ms. Babalola and I will start to go through each school and department budget to make sure that, again, anything that's asked for does align with the student success plan. And, you know, we will also identify whether or not those items will be a priority and make it into the FY '25 proposed budget. So that's just a quick update on progress towards my goals. Happy to answer any questions, or I'll move on to the assessment and accountability presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. I just want to acknowledge your mentor, Ms. Wong. She was also in attendance at convocations, and it was great to see her. We got a chance to chat with her, and I think that that seeing her at events that you're presenting is also a positive for us to build that relationship.
Absolutely. And she'll actually, to that point, Ms. Dolan, she'll be coming to one of our upcoming administrative team meetings at the end of November.
Other questions?
Madam Chair, we're going to transition to a presentation, so I invite the school committee with your permission to the front row and get the computer set up. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the school committee, members of the audience. I did want to provide an overview of the 2023 assessment and accountability data. As you know, the spring 2023 MCAS results were sent home to families last week. And along those lines, I wanted to be able to share some of that assessment data, as well as provide an overview of our accountability rating. Each district and the Commonwealth, as well as the schools within those districts, receive information around accountability. So I'll share that information with you this evening. We're going to start with assessment. As you know, the main assessment that we administer to our students is the MCAS, the Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment System. Currently, we are assessed in three areas: English Language Arts, grades three and eight and 10; mathematics, grades three through eight and 10 as well; and Science, Technology, and Engineering, which currently takes place at grades five, eight. And although the state uses the 10th grade as the testing grade, it actually depends on where your courses fall. So for example, the majority of our freshmen actually take biology as freshman, however they're reported as 10th grade results. So just when you see that, or as a parent, you might be, well, my child took them in ninth grade, and you're right, they did. But just state uses 10th grade as a reporting system. These assessments measure students' progress towards meeting grade-level standards and expectations. This evening, you're going to see that we are presenting results for three years. We will present results for 2023. We've also included 2022, so you can see a comparison to last year. And we're also including 2019. If you remember from last year's presentation, and again this year, DESI is really using 2019, the last administration of an assessment before the pandemic, as the baseline. So any targets that were developed or progress that were measured against is really going, looking back to 2019. So you'll see those three data sets this year. You know, I will share some highlights from, you know, potentially other years, but I will focus primarily on those three. The other reason why, obviously, 2020 is not theirs, we weren't given an administration because of COVID. And 2021 is actually not factored into our accountability data. Again, when those targets were established and progress was measured, it was really using 22 and 23. So that's why we also didn't include 2021. But as you know, this information is public, so all of the information that I'll present here tonight in this PowerPoint will also be made available to you, as well as the public. It'll be posted and shared out. But all the results in a very similar format to what I'm presenting tonight are located online. And you can, again, get into as much detail if you have the time that you want. So this shows an overall results for our 2023 ELA MCAS by grade level. So you can see in the left-hand column, you see the corresponding grades there. And then at the end, they also do group grades three through eight together. So there's actually eight reporting categories. And you can see 2019 being our baseline. 2022 is obviously how we did last year, and then 2023 is how we did this year. I think it's, you know, important to note, obviously, you can see that we either stayed the same or improved in five out of the eight reporting categories. And I think you're going to see similar results throughout, although we, you know, depending on the grade level, depending on the assessment, we've seen greater success in some areas and certainly still have areas to grow with other assessments and other grade levels. But we are pleased that we do believe we're making progress. Certainly, you know, we need to get back to where we were in 2019. But even when you look at 2019, those results really are not as satisfying as they should be. And so we know that, yes, short-term, that's where we're at least targeted to get back to, but we know we even have work to do from there if we were to get there. I also wanted to share some subgroup data with you. Again, this is for grades three through eight, but you can see that they actually have 12 reporting categories, there's 11 subgroups, but they also include all students. So you'll see 12 reported categories up there. And again, this is for just grades three through eight. I think it's worth noting that this year, we improved in eight out of the 12, or I should say, we stayed the same or improved in eight out of the 12 reporting categories. When you think back to last year when I was standing before you, we had only improved in two out of the 12. So again, significant progress there in grades three through eight overall for our subgroups. When you look at ELA achievement at the high school level, we certainly, you can see we improved in one out of the 11 subgroups. However, you know, certainly we acknowledge that there's still work to do there. I think it's also important to note when you look at the subgroups, just to provide some additional context, you'll see some subgroups are not reported. You need a minimum of 20 students to be in that subgroup in order for them to report or share any data from the state. So you may see a blank, that means there are no students either previously or currently in that subgroup, so it's hard to have any type of comparisons. But you also know too, when subgroups exist, and if there's a small number, you know, 20 to, you know, low twenties, any change of one or two students can significantly change the data. So when you see double-digit changes, you know, that could also speak to that as well. This shows math for the district. Again, grades three through eight, grades three and eight banded together, and then grade 10. See that we made improvement or stayed the same in four out of the eight reporting categories? And again, I just point back to last year, thinking certainly it's, like I said, we acknowledge we still have a lot of work to do. But I think if you remember back to last year, pretty much every change column was all in red. So I do think it speaks to the commitment by our teachers, by our administrators, by our community, as we all have a collective responsibility to improve really the small changes that are starting to take place. We're cautiously optimistic. Here's subgroup information for grades three through eight for math. Here's subgroup information for grades three through eight for math. And again, we either stayed the same or improved in eight out of 12 of the reported categories. One, you know, certainly want to definitely highlight this area, and again, thanks to Ms. Joyce, Ms. Cooley, the math department head, the math team at the high school, Ms. Watson, her administrative team. We saw some significant changes that we're very pleased with at the high school level. If you think back to when I was standing before you, from 21 to 22, we'd actually only improved in one out of the nine reporting categories. It was only nine because a subgroup didn't exist. Pleased to show that we either stayed the same or improved in nine out of the 10 reporting categories for this year. So again, hats off to our math department at the high school and Ms. Joyce. Science, unfortunately, we're, you know, have a lot of work to do in our science scores. We're somewhat disappointed that we continue to see a negative trend and a decline in our scores. But again, we know that there's work to do across the board, and we're committed to do that. Here's the subgroup information for Science, Technology, and Engineering, grades five and eight. And then the subgroup data for the high school. So next comes accountability, and obviously, assessment, the assessment data that I just shared with you certainly factors into that. But I wanted to also highlight some of the other areas that when we start talking about accountability that are really included in that. So the purpose of the accountability system, as you can see, is to provide clear, actionable information to families, community members, and the public about our district's and school performance. And again, I'm giving you information about our district, but all of this information exists for our schools as well. So the accountability system includes achievement, which I just went over, so obviously, it's the scaled scores in ELA Math and Science, Technology, and Engineering. Student growth, again, student growth shows the progress that one cohort makes, similar cohort compared to other students makes year over year. Typically, you're looking for anywhere between 40 and 60% growth from our students. I, you know, pleased to say that, and obviously, as you go up, that's considered high growth, but I am pleased to say that we met that. When you look at our ELA growth, for three through eight, we're at 46.3. For the high school, we're at 46.2. And then when you look at math, we're at 50.3, and, I'm sorry, for grades three through eight, and then math at the high school is 41.4. So again, we are in that target range. We certainly want to see higher growth. Really, anything 15 and above is considered to be high growth, and that's really where we want to fall consistently across the board. But we were pleased that we at least were in that target range for growth. High school completion, so looking at the four-year cohort graduation rate, again, those students that have moved through all four years as a cohort. Extended engagement rate, that's the five-year cohort, so any of those students that were still enrolled, you take that four-year group, any student that was still enrolled in that fifth year. They potentially maybe didn't meet the requirements, or for whatever reasons, were, you know, short of credits, or had some other type of qualifying event where they stayed engaged within that cohort. And then the annual dropout rate. No, I do just want to point out for the high school completion data that you're going to see, that data is actually lagging behind, so it's not based on the 2023, spring of 2023. So when we look at graduation rate and dropout rate, it's actually a year to two year, depending on year to two years behind, depending on the category there. So I just wanted to point that out. Progress towards English proficiency, that is looking at our English learners and how they're progressing on the access assessment, which again is an assessment to determine and monitor their progress towards English proficiency. So that's also factored in there. Chronic absenteeism, chronic absenteeism is defined as a student missing 10% or more of their school year. Obviously, if we're in 180 days, that magic number is 18, but they they look to see how many days the actual student was enrolled, not necessarily attended to get their baseline, and then they look at, obviously, number of days attended. And then advanced coursework. So how many of our students are taking advantage of advanced placement? Some of the higher-level math and science courses, although they're not, they're not labeled advanced placement, they do qualify as advanced coursework. So the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, they calculate targets for each district, school, and student group. You'll see some of that coming up, and again, all of this information is online as well. The 2023 targets for achievement indicators were published this past spring. Now, again, they're targets that obviously we want to work towards. It's very hard to say to a particular grade level or a particular group, you need to improve by two points to meet our target. You know, that doesn't necessarily mean much to a group of students, or even, you know, when we talk school-wide. But obviously, we want to continue to, you know, improve and make progress. Targets for non-assessment indicators are based on analysis of past trends and reasonable expectations for improvement. So really, this information is really multiple years' data collected, and then they obviously calculating those targets. Points are assigned based on progress towards each indicator's target, and I'll explain what that means a little bit more when you actually see that slide. We're assigned points for the progress that we make. And then overall progress towards our target is reported as a percentage, so the district, the school, we receive a percentage towards our target. On the next slide, and I understand this might be a little hard for you to see there, but this is what the information that DESI provides all of the districts. And so you can see over here, this is the information that I just, I was just speaking about. So you can see that we have achievement, growth, high school completion, progress towards English proficiency, and additional indicators such as chronic absenteeism, and then advanced coursework completion. You'll notice over here, there's two categories. So this is non-high school, so for us, this would be grades three through eight, and this would be our high school grades. They do one reporting category of all students, and then they also identify the lowest performing students. That is the lowest performing 25% of our students based on prior year's information. They don't actually calculate that, or they didn't calculate that this year for the high school, so that's why you don't see that data over there. And again, you needed to have a minimum of 20 students to be in that group to become, you know, be considered a cohort. I'm happy to get into a lot of detail. You'll see that, you know, there's points assigned or points earned, total points possible. I'll go over that in a minute, and then you see that there's actually a percentage weight. All that is factored in down the bottom where we actually get our numbers. So when you actually see, we're rated zero through four, you can see we have various ratings up there. So a zero actually means that there was, the performance declined, or our progress declined from the prior year. A one means that there was no change in performance, so we actually had the same performance level, progress level as we did the year before. A two means we actually improved. So when you, you know, you see two out of four, you might think to yourself, well, that's 50%, 50% is failing. Actually, no, in this case, it means we actually improved. We made progress. We just didn't make enough to meet our target. And three means we actually met our target. We made progress. We met our target. And four means we exceeded our target. So again, looking at the data up there, just to start with achievement, you can see that, you know, points earned, total points possible. We earned one out of 12 points. For growth, we earned five out of eight. And again, you know, obviously, I spoke about that being in that target range. Obviously, they don't report high school data for grades three through eight. English proficiency, progress towards that, we received one out of four points. And then chronic absenteeism, across the board, at all of our schools, both elementary, middle school, and high school, we exceeded our target for chronic absenteeism. So we received four out of four points there. And then obviously, at the elementary level, they don't have the ability to do advanced coursework. You can see, again, that information is very similar for our lowest performing students, so that bottom 25%. And then similar at the high school. And you can see 12 points, eight points, and then 12 points for the high school. And then another eight points for advanced additional indicators. So again, when you look, again, those are weighted. You can see that they actually come up with, you know, percentage at the end. So 45%, that's our target percentage. When you look at that, you're really trying to aim for 75%. If you hit that 75% threshold, that really means you're meeting, and obviously above, you'd be exceeding your targets and indicators. So that's really where we're aiming. Obviously, we want to be at 75 or above. We're at 45. We know, obviously, we have some work to do there. But again, we will continue to do that. I just wanted to share some information as well, because once you assign that, you know, target percentage, you are then categorized into one of two categories, well, seven additional categories, but two initial categories. Your district either requires assistance from the state, or it does not require assistance from the state or intervention. Thankfully, we are in the not requiring assistance or intervention, all of our schools. So as a district, we fell there, and our schools fell there as well. When I do say our schools, obviously, this information isn't necessarily shared for our non-testing grades. Some of the indicators, you know, are relevant, but when we look at accountability data, so the Merrill, the Merrill School would not have accountability information. Obviously, they don't have assessment information, and same thing for the Mitchell School as it currently is, because the grade three has moved out. But to that point, and then you can see, you know, the various seven categories that you are moved into based on the percentage point. I did try to highlight green. I realize it may not have come out as well. But if you remember, we are at 45%, so we do fall into that moderate progress towards target category. And you can see going from right to left, obviously, these are, if we were in this category, we would have intervention or assistance from, from DESI. So if broad comprehensive support, we'd be considered to be an underperforming school or, you know, underperforming district. Focus target support, your percentage would be between one and 10. You obviously have a low graduation rate, low performance of your subgroups, low participation. Our participation rate was at 99%, which is great. Obviously, you know, we want 100% of your students participating, and anything below 95 really puts you into a different category. But we were thankful that we had 99% participation rate across the board. So again, limited or no progress towards targets, zero to 24, and then moderate progress is where we fell at 45. You can see, you know, the end result there is 49, so we're not that far from actually being able to move into that next category of substantial progress towards targets. And then certainly, we want to be at meeting or exceeding, and we want to have schools of recognition. That's our ultimate goal. We want all of our schools to be schools of recognition, and, you know, confident that we will get there. Just to give you some, again, additional context, the majority of schools across the Commonwealth actually fell into the same category that we did, moderate progress towards targets. About 41% of the districts across the state fell into that. About 4% of the districts were rated as no progress, and 38% of the districts were rated as substantial progress towards their targets. And then only about 16% were meeting or exceeding their targets. So you've heard me talk about our path to excellence. Obviously, as our mission statement states, we want to provide excellence in education to all of our students. We feel as though that in many ways, we're doing that, but we know that we have certainly a lot of areas that we can improve on. You know, how are we going to get there? We are going to stay the course. Obviously, you've seen this. You've seen this visual. You've seen what we've kind of highlighted and outlined that we believe we need to do. And we believe that many of these changes that we put in place, and again, if you, if you were here last year, or even during the spring and into the summer, you've heard me talk about some of these changes. These changes are really in their infancy stages. Many of these changes that we've put in place are six months or less old. And so, you know, we don't want to necessarily alter our course just yet. We do feel, and I think the assessment data showed that, that some of the changes that we've put in place are showing results and showing positive progress, and so we want to continue to commit to that. We know, obviously, we have our new student success plan, so we're going to be implementing that over, not just this year, but obviously, over the next five. We want to make sure that with any of the new resources that school committee has most graciously supported, that we're implementing them with fidelity. And I think we saw in pockets where, you know, we had committed to that in certain grade levels. We actually saw those results. So we're very pleased with that, and again, we're rolling out even more high-quality instructional materials. You've heard me talk about making sure our systems are aligned, so that what's happening at the district is aligned to the student success plan, and that all the schools are aligned to that. Obviously, we want to make sure that our student staff and content are all aligned and that they're supported. We want to make sure that we continue to invest in the people that shape all of our educational experiences, so really making a concerted effort. We talked about that in our strategic plan or our student success plan, about investing in human capital. We know, not just, you know, kind of second to our students, the other most important cog in this wheel are our staff, faculty and staff. And so we really need to make a strong investment in them, because they are having a positive impact, as you can see, on our students. And then obviously, continuing to partner, you know, we talk about collective responsibility, and you'll see that in a minute. But we want to continue to partner with our families and stakeholders. And then obviously, engage in ongoing reflection. You know, we realize that we have to do a better job of analyzing, reviewing our data, measuring our progress as we go. We've already started to do that, not just with, you know, this assessment data, but we've done it with school-level data. We've done it with other assessments that we're giving. I mentioned the access data. We've talked about the I-Ready assessment. So all of that data, we're taking together and really using it to help drive instruction. How about, we do feel that, you know, if we stay the course at this point, if we're consistent, but have a sense of urgency, that you're going to continue, when I'm standing here next year, see more of those reds become green and those greens even increase. We are confident in that. But as I stated, we are fully committed to this. We've gotten great feedback along the way, you know, from our community, from our stakeholders. And what we're seeing across the board is that we do have buy-in to this collective responsibility. It can't just be one group is solely responsible for this. Yes, our job is to educate the students of Bridgewater and Rainham, and it's a responsibility we wholly accept and, you know, do it to the best of our abilities. But again, you know, I can't thank you enough for your support. You obviously play a major role in this. You've been so supportive of, of the administration, of the faculty, and so again, I just can't thank you. And then same thing with the community. You know, we're getting great feedback from our stakeholders, and then certainly the towns. I think we've done a great job of building strong relationships with them. You know, obviously, we rely heavily on the towns for, you know, financial and fiscal assistance, but that can't be the only thing. That certainly drives a lot of what our relationship is, is based on. But I was talking to, you know, one of the town council members in Bridgewater not too long ago. We talked about, you know, a school system that's a destination, a destination school system. You know, as you see Bridgewater, the town of Bridgewater undergoing some changes in their downtown, and certainly, Rainham has a lot of growth going on as well. We don't want to just, we don't want people just coming here because of that. We want people coming here because of our school system, and then they also have a great place to live. So we're committed to that. I know the towns are, as well as the community. You are, as school committee, so I do appreciate that. And I want to thank you on behalf of the administration, on behalf of the faculty and staff, but most importantly, on behalf of our 55, 100-plus. We're up to 55, almost 56. Meg's going to share that with you in a little bit. So thank you for that. Happy to take any questions. As I stated, you know, all of this information, I know it can be overwhelming. You know, will be shared with you, and it's also, it's been public. It's online, so feel free to bruise it at your leisure.
I'm sure there are questions. I'll just say, even myself sitting with this, it's a lot of data to take in all at once. And I know myself, I need to sit with some of it and look through some of it, but at this point, I will ask, turn to the committee and ask a question. Mr.?
Yeah, just a quick, well, thank you for the very cogent update, Mr. Powers. Obviously, a lot changed between 2019 and today. And I'm wondering, across the state, if we see what has been called a loss of learning due to the pandemic and drops in scores generally across the state on all of these? Or is it more specific either to Bridgewater, Rainham, the type of district Bridgewater, Rainham is, or you, you know, you see where I'm from?
I do, 100%. Yes, so we did see consistently across the state, or we, or the state saw a significant drop from 2019 when they started showing, again, looking at last year's data, 2022. Obviously, you know, there's a lot to be said there when, you know, you look from 2019 to no MCAS, to now coming back to a hybrid year. Really, 2022 was the first year that, you know, students were fully in for an assessment. You know, I think it's disappointing. I don't want to say it was expected, because we never want to expect, you know, a decline in achievement. But I think it was probably something that we weren't completely caught off guard. I think, you know, our significant decrease in some areas, I do think caught us off guard in some ways. But I think, you know, we, there's a lot that we can, you know, attribute to that, and we talked about that a little bit last year around, you know, our absenteeism rate. Students aren't here in school. They can't learn. So I think you obviously saw quite an improvement in that this year, and I think that also speaks to, again, seeing some And I think that also speaks to, again, seeing some increases in our achievement data. Obviously, the commitment by our faculty and staff to, you know, embrace some of the new resources that we're putting in front of them. You know, I think anytime you roll out a new resource, as much as staff's embracing it, we know there's always going to be a learning curve, not just for faculty and staff, but also for our students. And so, you know, sometimes you do expect an implementation dip. Sometimes you see it, sometimes you don't. I think what we're seeing in terms of, I guess, a rebound is that our rebound isn't necessarily as significant as some other districts in, across the state. I think we're going to get there. But I think to your point, Mr. Fitzgibbons, I think what you saw from 2019 to last year was very consistent across the state. And I think what you're seeing this year is the results vary from district to district in terms of, you know, have they been able to kind of stop the decline? And how much have they actually been able to rebound and turn things around? I hope that answered your question.
To Mr. Fitzgibbons' question, there's actually an article from CNN from this time last year. It's a national report card shows new evidence of COVID-19 devastating impact on U.S. children's education. That was only a year ago. So it's not just Massachusetts, it's the entire country. And then there's a follow-up article from May of this year that shows there is, to your point, a bright spot, they're calling it, that shows that we're rebounding. Yes, to your point, we are not where we want to be rebounding, but we're working on it.
I just, you know, I, again, this is not to make any excuses. But I think when you actually, you know, start to kind of look at what transpired during COVID, we say during COVID, during that, you know, really 2021 school year, once we were back, it was so significant. And you somewhat lose sight of it. We were talking the other day as an administrative team, just, you know, sometimes you have those nightmarish flashbacks of close contact tracing and what that means. And, you know, you remember, because Mr. Swenson and I would be reporting on this, we had some families where, you know, multiple individuals within that family tested positive. There was that quarantine period for each member of a family. I mean, we had students that missed, and again, they were in a hybrid model. But they missed maybe sometimes in a row, almost thirty days of school in a row. That's, you know, so significant. And then we actually, you know, when we look back at it, I feel bad. Some of the students actually had multiple quarantines like that. So it may have been an initial thirty days. Granted, DESI lessened some of those restrictions as the year went on. But, you know, it could have been, you know, thirty days to start because of multiple people in the household. Then they had another bout where maybe they were out another ten days. I mean, yes, we were doing remote learning. But I think, you know, nothing can, nothing will ever be able to replace a live teacher in a classroom and the impact that they have on our students. And, you know, we just, it was not because of lack of effort, it was just the circumstances. However, that being the case, you know, we are moving out of that. Although, you know, COVID can still be around. But I do think, you know, there is, every now and then, it, you know, kind of bubbles to the surface that, wow, we really are still seeing some of the ill effects of what our students and staff and families had to go through during that time period. But like I said, we are not going to just rely on that and say, well, we're going to move forward.
Questions? Mrs.?
I was wondering, how will the expansion of iReady influence the data that you showed there?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand. Influence the data, the assessment accountability data?
Yeah, like where would we see improvements to kind of demonstrate that the expansion of iReady is working?
Okay, so I think hopefully I can answer that. But if not, let me know. So iReady data, obviously, it can be used as a predictor for standardized testing. So depending on the progress that students make, could potentially give us an indication of how they're going to do on the standardized test in the spring. I think that's maybe where you're going with that. If not, stop me and I'll go in a different direction. But so, yes, we're hopeful that we'll be able to use this data to give us kind of a glimpse into what we can maybe expect for the future, for the next round of assessments. We, Ms. Joyce and Ms. Richards, did take a look at that. It wasn't a hundred percent alignment. There was various, depending on the grade level, it seemed to be, you know, closely aligned to what the students were predicted to, well, how they did on iReady and how they were predicted to do on standardized tests. There was definitely some closeness there. In other grade levels, there was, it wasn't as close. So we're not a hundred percent confident that it's going to be an accurate predictor, but we do feel like it'll give us some information. I think what we're seeing on the iReady exam or diagnostic assessment is kind of what we saw up there around growth. I do think we saw our students make significant growth last year. In many cases, you know, they viewed it as, are you making a year's worth of growth? Which everyone should be expecting, right? You come in, you know, beginning of seventh grade, you should make a year's worth of growth. But in many cases, we actually had students make multiple years of growth. Depending on, they might have been so far behind that they not only, you know, they made a, sort of say, they were seventh grader and they were at a fifth grade level. They not only beat up fifth grade, sixth grade, they actually caught up to seventh grade. And then some other cases, if they were in seventh grade, we would expect them to, you know, finish seventh grade. But in some cases, they actually were able to go on. So I do think we're seeing glimmers of hope there, that we did have some pretty decent growth. And I think that speaks to the data that we're seeing on a regular basis.
I was curious, how responsive is the data to interventions? Like the intervention put in place now, especially as it pertains to the annual action plans for the student success plan? When would we expect to see the data kind of change? Does it take a year, two years, three years?
I think depending on what we're looking at for data, I mean, you know, here's the challenge with using this assessment data. When I say this assessment data, meaning MCAS. You know, it's now October, coming up on November. Students took this assessment back in the spring. We unfortunately will get the results until the fall. And now you have a whole new group of students in front of you. So it's, you know, how much do we, we always have to weigh in balance. Are we looking at last year's data with last year's kids to make changes with this year's students? I think when it speaks to trends, that, you know, maybe historically, all of our students fall down on figurative language. Well, that might be more of an instructional practice. Maybe, you know, there's a gap in the resources that we're using, or maybe there's a gap in instruction. But I think if you see inconsistent patterns like that, then it speaks to, it could be, not saying the students, but again, you have different students in front of you. So we try to use that data to make changes when we can. I think what we're really seeing in terms of interventions, I think is where you started with this. That's what we're really using iReady and other diagnostic, whether it be formal or informal data on a daily basis, with the teachers to make immediate changes right away. Obviously, there's some interventions within the iReady program where students can work through what they refer to as my path. So they're, you know, prescribe lessons for the students and it adjusts to how they're doing on the assessment. And then there's also teacher-led interventions that go along with that. So the teacher, you know, again, based on his or her data set can see, oh, I have five students that maybe need some acceleration on this particular topic. I can click on that and now here's a bank of resources and lessons that I can use in interventions. So teachers have that at their fingertips at the K to eight level. Obviously, we're expanding that at ninth grade. But they, you know, they have it for ELA and math. We're also trying to utilize our other support staff. So we do have interventionists at each grade level. You know, so it's not just the classroom teachers, the interventionists, the Title I teachers, special education teachers. Everybody is really trying to utilize this program because it is so user-friendly from an educator standpoint. You really, everything is right there for you. And it gives you immediate information. That's the best part about it. So we don't have to wait, you know, until springtime to take the assessment and then next fall. But, you know, we obviously use this information to drive a lot of what we're seeing across the board. But I think what we, you know, really try to use iReady for is to make those daily, weekly, monthly changes.
Mr. Powers, I have two questions. I'll start with my first is, I've looked at the data a little bit. I'm curious from your perspective, is the differences between Bridgewater Middle School and Rainham Middle School? And there are differences in the data and what's being presented and what you see in that data between Bridgewater Middle School and Rainham Middle School?
Yeah, I think, you know, for the most part, you know, and we've talked about this with the principals, we never want to get into a situation where we're, you know, comparing one school to the next in terms of, you know, pitting one school to next. We certainly look at it for positive trends. So, you know, yes, if there's something that's happening in this building and maybe for whatever reason, that hasn't trickled over to the other. We've had these conversations at the elementary level with La Liberty and Williams as well. Is there an instructional practice that you're using? Or, you know, has a principal found a creative way to do some scheduling so that teachers are receiving common planning? And now they can plan those interventionists? Do you have an intervention block? So I think, you know, when we look at that, we're really looking at that information and that data to really kind of get at what's happening structurally. Because I do think, you know, and obviously, being here now for some years, I think when I first got to the district, it probably wasn't, you know, that was something that the district has always been working on in terms of, you know, what's being used in Bridgewater for resources versus Rainham. And I think now with a lot of the new resources, again, with your support that we've rolled out, you're seeing that. So it's no, it's not, you know, well, you know, Williams uses this program and La Liberty uses this program. Same thing with Bridgewater Middle School and Rainham Middle School. It's consistent. We're using, you know, consistent programs across the board.
And my other question, I know, particularly for those kids that are eleventh grade now, that were in tenth grade, the requirements to pass MCAS for graduation is a first. It's been waived previous years. And I know, as a parent that has a student, did not pass them. That's in eleventh grade. Is those educational proficiency plans, do we have more kids on educational proficiency plans this year than we did 2019 or previous years? Because it's a big deal now for these kids in eleventh grade that where it wasn't the past two or three years. Because the MCAS was waived.
Ms. Watson and I did talk about that. She didn't necessarily, you know, we also look at, obviously, the competency determination. And so, yes, if we had students that didn't meet that initially because their first round of MCAS, you know, Ms. Watson and I were talking, we also pulled some data. We haven't seen that by the time these students are graduating that they actually haven't passed MCAS. There could certainly be a reason if we have a student that, you know, might be on an alternative assessment, they just get the certificate of attendance. But she could not recall, and I couldn't find any data where to our, you know, majority of graduates that, other than the ones we know about, that we've given out a certificate of attendance. So we are confident that if they do get on that, you know, education proficiency plan, that they will eventually pass MCAS. The data has shown that, so we're confident in that.
Other questions by the committee?
By the chair. Mr. Powers, for the last time, sitting here while you present this presentation, I want to reiterate again my strong dislike for the use of MCAS to do really anything. The data is old by the time we get it. And I think iReady is a more, to your point, a more timely assessment tool that we can change immediately and not wait and change for a new group of students that are in front of us. So again, I've said it to you before, we've had this conversation. The state needs to wake up and figure out that MCAS is not the way to go here. There are other and better ways to do this for our kids. So I appreciate you presenting the data. But again, MCAS is not, is not the way to go.
Is now a bad time to tell you that they're looking to expand the number of tests that they give?
Yes.
And then scores are increasing to pass?
Not overly surprised that if you follow the money, where that ends up taking you.
I think, you know, to that point, Mr. Dolan, Madam Chair, if I may, I mean, you know, yes, we definitely, you know, we're mindful that this doesn't necessarily capture all of the successes that our students have. And we want to make sure that, yes, if this shows that we're meeting grade level standards and expectations, that we want to celebrate and highlight that. But we know that there are still a number of students out there that are having successes on a daily basis that might not be captured in here. And so finding ways to celebrate and highlight them as well. I do have to say, I think our teachers, I was actually at Rainham Middle School today and happened to be walking by a teacher who was talking to a student in the hallway. The particular student was a little upset about how she had just done an assessment. And the words of comfort and encouragement this teacher was giving our student, I think it speaks to what you're talking about. And I sent a follow-up email and got a great response. And the teacher was so confident. I think she said she's going to rock every assessment going forward. She just needed a little pick-me-up and recognition that she is a smart individual and can do it. So I think, and I think our teachers do an amazing job of that. And that can't be, you know, underscored as well. I think we use it for purposes that are going to help us and, you know, lead to changes, positive changes when we can. I think, you know, when we look at, say, budget development, you look at some of our subgroup data. I think it speaks to, you know, maybe where we need to, you know, propose some additional positions when you look at some of our subgroups, students with disabilities, our English learners that are starting to lag behind. You know, I think we can use this type of data to show the need for some of that. But again, that's a programming staffing, not a student success.
I would just like to say, Mr. Powers, I would like to commend the staff at the schools because part of the testing requires kids to be in their seats. And our chronic absentee rate has dropped dramatically. And that goes to the social, emotional support of getting kids in their seats to be able to learn. So on that, I would like to commend the staff and everybody's hard work of getting kids in their seats to learn.
Hundred percent, I couldn't agree more. It really comes down to, I mean, we as administrators can put structures and things in place and offer support and resources. But it really comes down to what happens in the classroom and the conditions that those teachers, you know, create for our students. And again, I think back to last year, you know, the data certainly wasn't as, I'd say, as good this year because we know we have to make improvements. But it was pretty disheartening last year. And our teachers didn't shy away from that. They, I think they followed, you know, the lead that we tried to set and say, okay, this is who we are, we know we can be better. And I think you're starting to see that, that they recognize that, you know, they can do it and that they're committed to it. They're committed to our kids, which, listen, at the end of the day, is what we want. And I think we see that on a daily basis.
I think that's it then.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Next is the October seat count.
I have a slide if you want, but you also have it in your book. So whichever you want. I'm up for anything. I have a little cough, so if I go into a coughing fit, I apologize. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school committee and Superintendent Powers. I'm here to, you'll see, present the preliminary totals for the October one report. These numbers will be finalized early November when I come back and present you a full report. But right now, I just wanted to report that Mitchell, on October 2nd, which is the first school day in October this year, which is the first school day in October this year, um, there was nine hundred and thirty-eight students PK to two at Williams Intermediate School, eight hundred and thirty-two, grade three to grade five. Bridgewater Middle School, seven hundred and eighty-eight, grade six through eight. Merrill Elementary School, K in one, three hundred and forty-four. La Liberty Elementary School, five hundred and eight, grades two through four. Rainham Middle School, seven hundred and forty-five, grades five through eight. Uh, therapeutic day program, which had students nine through twelve, um, eleven in, at our high school, grades nine through twelve, one thousand three hundred and eighty-one. In our itinerants, our service-only students, there's thirty-three. Uh, Excel, our alternative high school, uh, grades nine through twelve, twenty-one. And in our out-of-district, which is students in PK through grade thirteen, is thirty-eight. For a total preliminary number of five thousand six hundred and thirty-nine students in our, in our schools in district, in out-of-district placements. This number, as I said, is preliminary, so, uh, a, a complete report in November.
Are there questions?
Do we have a comparison from last year?
Yes, last year we had, um, roughly five hundred and fif- five thousand five hundred and fifty.
And, and just for folks, um, this is something I'm very interested in, and I charted out and trimmed it, it's in the file, you can see it. And I tried to compare apples to apples, so there's some of the out-of-district numbers that aren't, aren't included, but it is apples to apples. And these numbers are pulled from DUCY, but if you, if you look at the trending, our district enrollment is the highest it's been since 2012. Which, again, speaks to some of the demands and some of, when we think about budget and needs and we think about the volume in our schools, um, are, we are, we are, you know, again, increasing very much enrollment. And you can see school by school where those numbers are. I will say, just so people are aware, some of the numbers look like they jump up and down for some of the schools. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Powers, but I believe that's because of the moving, moving of some of the grade levels prior to our middle schools. But, but they even out at the total numbers.
If I may, Madam Chair, when you, just, just to that point, when you look at our enrollment this year compared to last year, and certainly, uh, the graph that, uh, Lauren put in there is, is pretty significant. But, you know, when you look at the Bridgewater side, all but one grade level, um, K to eight, has gone up. Only first grade actually went down, although I'm sure our first grade teachers would tell you, you know, class size is still high. But if you look at every other grade, kindergarten, second, all the way up through eighth, there was an increase in enrollment. On the Rainham side, uh, not as significant, but still, uh, four out of the grades started to increase. And then same thing at the high school level, two of the grades. Uh, so i- i- students are moving in, I think Meg would attest that probably on a daily basis, they're still coming to register.
Yes.
Uh, and so this number more than likely will, will only go up as the year goes on.
There's a give and take. Students move into the district this time of year, but our students also move out, families relocate, et cetera. So it is always an ebb and flow, you know. But when our numbers go up, we want to get that.
Are there any questions regarding the home elementary area?
I know, just, just see how many times I put that there. Just to make sure, just think anything different.
And I don't know if it, um, you could answer it now or next month, but I was wondering, based on the demographics, um, are there any needs? Like, do we find that we have more kids that have, um, English learning, you know, English learners or low income? Just to kind of understand the demographics of this increase. And if the school district is prepared, do you have the services that you need?
Right, and so that, um, when we're all finalized and our report is complete, we'll have those increases on the different, um, types of learners and populations.
Mrs. Meathville, that, that's a, that's a great point, if I may, Madam Chair. It, it just, it, with some of these, uh, subgroups, it's so hard to predict sometimes. To, to your point, I think one of the things that we're seeing right now is, you know, we have had a number of, uh, English learners move into the district, which is great because we, you know, we have a very successful, um, English learner program. However, um, you know, when you have twenty-five to thirty students move in that you weren't planning on, that, you know, really equates to another teacher. And so how are we servicing them? So sometimes it's, we, we, we don't know and it's, you know, and after the fact that, okay, we have to try to move resources around or case loads become high. You know, so that, to your point, is, is very much a, it's, it's a challenge and one that, uh, we, we continue to struggle with on a daily basis. When we know that those students are enrolling, uh, if they all registered in the spring would be a great chance. Well, they typically, you know, come in the summer and in the fall and sometimes with the needs that we didn't anticipate.
All right, thank you.
Um, at this point, we'll move on to personnel reports.
Madam Chair, members of the school committee and Superintendent Powers. I'm going to report on the personnel movements from September nineteenth through October thirteenth. The past few weeks, we've had three rehires, six new hires, three voluntary reassignments, one reassignment, one resignation, and one retirement.
Any questions, please?
I wanted to revisit the question that I had a couple of meetings ago about the demographic breakdown of the new hires.
That is something that we're looking to do in the future, in a future meeting that, um,
I think we've talked about, um, Mrs. Meathville, um, since we'll have final seat count numbers and final numbers, especially more of our staff will be hired completely, is presenting that data in November.
Next, um, the business office.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school committee members and Superintendent Powers. I'm here to give a summary on the treacherous quarterly report of July one, twenty twenty-three through September thirty, twenty twenty-three. Chapter seventeen, school aid. These funds have been coming in timely. At the end of each month, we received seven million, seven hundred thirty-four thousand, one hundred thirty-two dollars during this quarter. Athletic fees, we have collected twenty-three thousand, five hundred sixty dollars for this quarter. This leaves a balance of one hundred twenty-six thousand, four hundred forty dollars to be collected for the remaining of the school year. Investments, investment of funds, interest earnings for fiscal year twenty-four, we estimated receiving forty-five thousand dollars. Due to the rising interest rates, we have collected one hundred six thousand, nine hundred four dollars for the quarter. We have exceeded by sixty-one thousand, nine hundred four dollars. Miscellaneous receipts, this is for reimbursement or refunds from prior year. During this quarter, we received approximately two thousand, six hundred twenty-eight dollars. Medicare revenue, year-to-date, we collected eighty thou- eighty thousand, one hundred sixteen dollars. Rental of school facility, we have collected twelve thousand, two hundred dollars during this quarter. Charter school, year-to-date, we received fifteen thousand, five hundred eighty-two dollars. Construction debt appropriations and town assessments, we are rece- receiving timely. This concludes my report. Does anyone have any questions?
No, thank you very much.
Wait, add a question.
Sure.
So that revenue report does not capture grants?
It, it does not. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school committee, Superintendent Powers, and members of the audience. Today, I will be reporting on quarter one of the budget report, which is from July first to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. I believe we all have a copy of the budget report in our pockets. So tonight, instead of going through, uh, the budget report line by line, I would like to direct our attention to few lines that I feel I should expand it on. So first and foremost, the first quarter is the kickstart of a new school year. During this time, we're wrapping up the previous years. We're setting up the new fiscal year. We're also setting up encumbrances for the salaries, uh, for transportation, for contracted services. We're making sure that staffs are paid, um, using the live, the correct line account numbers according to DUCY's guideline. So there isn't much going on in the first quarter. Also, please note that during this time, the line accounts, sometimes you will see as I go on, on this presentation, that are in deficit. They are due to encumbrances that we set up. And these encumbrances, um, are anticipated expenses or expenditure that are to be incurred in the future, but they are not yet paid for. Some of these encumbrances are transportation, they are utilities, they are tuitions that we already set up. I will be directing our attention to that line as we go. And also, I would like to, I would like to let us know that these encumbrances have been taken out of the bottom line. So for this reason, I would please ask us to direct our attention to page six, oh, sorry, page eight on the budget report. So on page eight on the budget report, going towards the, uh, three-quarter of the page there, the transportation lines, about three lines there are in deficit. Comparing these lines to what we had last year, we have some increases in enrollment, just like, uh, the previous presenter said. And due to this, we have increases in what we had originally budgeted for. And this could be due to, uh, various IEP needs of each student. For example, um, if a new kid come in, a new student come into the district and the IEP's best, uh, stipulates that we have to transport the, the child from one place to the other with monitor, we have to cover the cost. So student ed- I mean, special education transportation is very unstable and cannot be predicted. Because we don't know what we can see or receive between now and two weeks or three weeks or the next quarter. So we cannot predict what the lines will, will be. So this is the main reason why we leave the encumbrances as high as they are. And we're sure that as we continue to monitor this over the course of the fiscal year, by the time we get to, to the third or fourth quarter, we should be able to say that this is the number of kids that we have. This is the number of, of transportation that is taking those students from one location to the other. But at this time, um, encumbrances are there just to be on the safe side. Could I please, uh, direct your attention to page nine? Going towards the, uh, bottom of that page is the utility lines. We have the electricity line in the deficits. As we know that we're not sure what modern nature will bring to us over the end of the year or next year. We have been fortunate to have a very good weather last year, but we're not sure what to expect this year. But I can sense that it's going to be very, very cold. The reason being that, no, okay, I'll take no. Well, we can't predict, so let's prepare for it. And that is why, um, we have that encumbrance setting there, just to cover ourselves, uh, just in case we have, uh, a blast. So electricity and utility of the building are essential encum- encumbrances that we have to set up at the beginning of the fiscal year. This way, we know that we have the fund held up for that purpose if, um, we need it. This year also, George Mitchell Elementary School resumes its full, uh, usage. That's part of the encumbrance. So for this reason, we believe that in the fourth, uh, third quarter, we should be able to start seeing the reality of the time. We will continue to monitor that line to make sure that we, um, have ourselves covered for the weather and make sure that we have enough fund to take care of the bill as the fiscal year progresses. Would you please turn to page twelve, which is another line that is in deficit. Tuition to out-of-district placements for public day and residential school is also in the negative. Students that are in this type of placement are entitled to the full protection of state and federal special education law and regulation. The tuition pricing are set by the state and must be adhered to. So the state, however, helps districts through sucker breaker reimbursement to offset some of these costs. Although we budgeted low on this line with the awareness that we're going to get some, uh, special, I mean, some sucker breaker reimbursement, which we will use to ob- offset this. So at this time, on that line, we do see some negatives there. And the reason being that the budgeted amount was low. We do have sucker breaker money that are coming in that we're using to offset that line. So at this point, I can boldly say that we, uh, we started well. We started well and going through the quarter, so far from the first quarter and into the second quarter, I can say that the bottom line is good. And by the time we get to three, the third quarter, we should be able to know the, the, the bottom line better. And from there, be able to close the fiscal year well. By this, I will entertain any question.
Oh, sorry, thank you. Thank you. So for the out-of-tuition, uh, that you had mentioned, that was budgeted last year at a fourteen percent increase that we were recommended to increase too by the state.
Yes.
So what I'm, and, I know it's not you, it came from the state, that's, that, that number. Are you saying that we should have probably budgeted higher than what the state recommended?
I am not saying that. So definitely, we did budgeted the fourteen percent. But at the same time, we knew that we were going to get the reimbursement from sucker, sucker breakers. So everything working together is where we are currently.
And this, I guess it's more for Mr. Powers than for Mr. Powell, although, um, they might know just to follow up. Are we seeing more students utilizing these services than would have been in the budget? That would have been the other.
Right, that's, that's the other increase that we don't, we don't know until we, until we know.
Right.
Uh, I, I believe we've had one additional student, I can't see that far, Ms. Har. Possibly one recent student, I think, that moved in, uh, requiring out of district, is that?
So we've had two.
Two, okay.
That have moved in and then, uh, but we are doing everything we can to provide interventions and, um, make sure that we're taking data on the students, we keep them in district as much as we can.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that? Um, just knowing some of this, are, are they in out-of-district day placements or out-of-district residential? Cause the cost is dramatically different.
It is dramatically different. Um, we actually just had one student step down from residential, which is great. Um, she reunited back into her home, so that's helpful for us. Um, and so for the majority of day schools, we do try to work with our collaborative partners to be able to, um, you know, offset some of those costs. There are some students with significant health issues that need a higher level of care, so some of those schools are more expensive. However, we do try to do the day schools and our collaboratives as much as possible.
And just to note, the two that are new to us, if they were in out of, they were in day or residential, if you don't know this, none.
Um, they are both in day programs, yep.
And just so, committee, please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Powers, day school placements cost about, on average, fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year. And residential schools, on average, can cost a hundred and fifty thousand. And residential schools, on average, can cost $150,000, if not more. Usually a lot more, actually, a year for one student.
And then to factor in the, the day school students, you know, when you look at tuition, we also have to look at transportation. So I think when you look at, you know, approximately anywhere from $70,000 to $100,000 for a day school student or more, depending on where they're going. And then certainly the residential, $100,000 plus, I mean, some I think are.
$400,000 a year.
Four or $500,000. If, if it would help, you know, to, to answer some of the questions about what our numbers are, we can certainly look at a future meeting of getting just a breakdown and share that with the committee of, you know, out-of-district students.
Other questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also did want to thank Ms. Babalola. She put together a budget workshop, which we attended on Monday before Budget Sub. It was very extensive. It was a lot of information. And thank you so much for doing that. It was wonderful to get down to the basics of all the budget information that you've organized. So thank you for putting that together. So regarding Budget Subcommittee, on Monday, October 16th, 2023, the Budget Subcommittee met at 6:30 in the Superintendent's Conference Room. In attendance were Mrs. Conrad Lovarinto, Mr. Fitzgibbons, Mrs. Martelli, Superintendent Powers, Assistant Superintendent Barry, Business Manager Ms. Babalola, Treasurer Mr. Chisholm, Mr. John Duggan from Bristol County Savings Bank, Ms. Rosemary Bell, our Base Director, our Recording Secretary, Mrs. McDougall, and myself. Also in attendance via Zoom was Mr. Adam Teff of Titan Gen. Our first matter of business that we discussed, our current natural gas contract expires at the end of the school year. Ms. Babalola invited Mr. Adam Teff of Titan Gen to attend our meeting via Zoom to present options for our next contract. Titan Gen works with districts to create collaboratives for optimal purchasing power. Due to the timing, we did miss joining the current collaborative this round, but he gave us our current options via a presentation of the market for the past 18 months. Based on that, he also thinks that the end of our next contract, we'll be able to get into next collaborative as well. Of the top three options, which he did present this presentation, which was included in your drive as well to review, of the top three options that he found, our current provider, which is Direct Energy, has the best pricing per decatherm via a 36-month contract, which is 8.645 decatherns. We are currently in the current contract at 6.77 decatherns, with one year remaining in the contract. The financial impact for starting fiscal year 2025, he stated, would be about an increase of $100,000 per year. However, if we lock in now with a fairly stable price and a healthy natural gas supply prior to the upcoming heating season, which you can't really predict it exactly, but he does think that the prices will go up exponentially during the heating system and into the spring. This price would lock in for when we start the next contract. He only predicts that, he predicts the pricing to increase over the next year. And it's best to shop early when the prices have been fairly stable, as he and Ms. Babalola have been looking into this for the past couple of months. So based on the presentation that he gave in our discussion at Budget Sub, Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to lock in and approve a 36-month contract rate with Direct Energy at a rate of 8.6, 8.627 per decatherm to begin when our current contract expires.
One second.
A motion is made by Mrs. King and a second by Mr. Fitzgibbons. Any additional questions?
I'd just like to point out that one of the things that was brought up was we have really good pricing because we got it kind of during the pandemic when everything, all natural resource prices were crashing. So it'll be a bit of adjustment for the budget overall, but it's certainly within our ability to handle.
What is, would there have been any difference in the pricing if we were able to align to join the collaborative?
So the collaborative pricing could have been cheaper if our contract aligned. The point with the collaborative, if I misspoke, please let me know, is you have a whole bunch of districts getting in at the same time. So it could lower the price. But we missed that because of the time when our contract ends. He's hoping that we will line up for the next one. But he said this price, based on other districts and other contracts and the current market price, is a fair price for going into it.
You said he hopes. Did he give any indication when the next collaborative would meet? I mean, say, you know, we've talked about the budget and being, you know, the upcoming budget's going to be tight. Any ability to save any money would, you know, be a good thing. Do you have to do a 36?
So the, there is options within the presentation that he gave. We could do a lower, but the price does increase. I think the presentation that he gave, if we go into the 36-month, we will be then going into, we will be able to get into a collaborative at that time with other people that are expiring at that same time.
He mentioned that the collaborative was just re-procured in like the last six or 12 months. So there wouldn't be an option to get into that collaborative. Like doing the 36-month lines us up with the ability to get into a collaborative when that procurement or that, because they procure the energy, whatever, when that one is up.
And I get, but I hear hope, may, there's no definite.
If anyone could definite in the energy market, none of us would be sitting here. I don't think Mr. Denver, I mean, beyond an island somewhere, trading futures. But it was really interesting to look at. He had a, he had a whole graph around, you know, where the projections in the market were, where supply was going to be, where demand was going to be, where the, where the production was going to be. And so actually, if you look back in your report, I believe that the two-year contract was the biggest cost per decatherm because the supply was going to be low. The, the supply of production was going to be low, so it was going to drive up the price. That's why we went out to the three years. I mean, the definite you have is the definite you have, which is the rate that we can lock in tonight when we do it. And then that's locked for three years. And obviously, a lot can happen in three years, so I believe it about.
Chair, I, I think the other piece to this is these are great graphs that show use and what we've done, where we're going to go. But in a, in a world where we are now looking at two wars potentially, everything when it comes to utilities goes upward over time. So I, I think that that, we need to lock this in tonight because of the uncertainty that's coming in the next couple of weeks, never mind a couple of years.
And yes, Mr. Dillon, he did mention that the uncertainty of just what's happening in Europe and the Middle East, you know, a lot of uncertainty that drives a lot of the cost. And, and he, he talked about how much, which I did not know this, that the United States unregulated, if that's the right word, energy. And we began to be able to sell it internationally in 2016, natural gas. And so that's what driven up the cost and international bias. The gas were three times what we buy it for. And so that will continue. He felt that those costs will continue to go up. So I learned a lot about gas that night, natural energy commodities. But yes, he did talk about the, the uncertainty in the rest of the world. Other questions, Mr. Denver? I don't know if that answered your question or not, but I don't know if we can answer the question.
I'd ask you.
Yep.
Is there a termination fee associated if we say yes and then prices go down and we want to get out? Is there a termination fee for this three-year contract?
I don't know, Miss.
That wasn't how we discussed. So was it reported and how that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Historically, typically, there is not a, a get-out clause, if you would. Not with, not with utilities typically. Or historically here, we haven't seen those in contracts in the past. But I don't want to speak to this one. I wasn't at, at the Budget Sub.
Yeah, it wasn't.
You didn't mention that, but I, I also can't foresee the price dropping. And our contract expires at the end of the school year. So between now and then, just less than 12 months, I don't see the price dropping between now and then.
And he did talk about some districts that had to lock, had to rebid or enter contracts last year or, you know, eight months, 10 months ago, are paying $15 a decatherm. Felt we were in a good place in between of not being too high and again, what we paid, what we got two or three years ago is what happened. He said, a lot. Other questions? So there's been a motion being floated by Mrs. King and a second by Mr. Fitzgibbons. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? And next, I'm from Mrs. King, and we see resolutions?
Oh, I'm not quite.
Oh, budget, sorry, sorry. I was trying to repeat.
And I can skip the other budget. Sorry. I tried to adjourn my budget early. Poor Mrs. Babalola was like, you skipped me. Next, we discussed, we did have an audit question. A school committee member had a question regarding the fiscal year 2022 audit. There was an auditor's remark noted that Bridgewater-Rainham Regional School District had an estimating 66% of custodial credit risk, and this presented too much of a credit risk. Mr. Duggan attended our meeting. He is from Bristol County Savings Bank. He did review the documents and spoke to the Budget Sub. He indicated that the auditor's memo is a boilerplate audit comment and can be misleading. And continued that when you look for a bank, you look at overall rating. Our school district gauges multiple banks, which are all in good standing and have the highest rating given to banking institutions, which is green, three stars. Some confusion surrounding why Unibank required additional insurance was cleared up. Due to the amount of money borrowed for the new school building project, MSBA and contract parameters required the insurance rating. Mr. Duggan also explained that DIF is offered to banks with smaller assets and that two of the Bridgewater- Rainham School District banks would be leaving DIF as their assets are now too large. Lastly, he suggested that the Bridgewater- Rainham Regional School District address the comment during the fiscal year 23 audit cycle by clarifying with the auditor that our district has sufficient and additional insurance that all filed call reports give green, three-star ratings to all of our banking institutions. That was just as an FYI, and no action was taken.
Any questions for Mrs. King on that?
Do you have a copy of that audit?
It would be available with the business office. It was not as part of the, it was just informational at our Budget Sub. I don't have a copy of the audit.
We can get it to you. Mrs. King, is there?
We received a track and tennis court update and parking lot bid award update from Superintendent Powers. He indicated the parking lot bid was awarded to Lawrence Lynch of Cape Cod, who was also the contractor for the track and tennis court project. They have begun the project and should be completed soon, barring any weather issues. If you drove in, you noticed the paved parking lot that's almost completed outside. We, he also gave an update regarding the track and tennis court project and stated we are still under budget. Regarding timeline, however, based on weather, we may have to extend the October 31st deadline if the weather does not hold out. One of the last parts of the project is the coating, which requires several hours and days of above 50-degree weather. So that, we will keep everyone updated as to the timeline for that. Do you have anything that you want to add to that, Mr. Powers?
If I may, Mrs. King, Madam Chair, thank you. Yes, just, I, I, again, I want to echo what Ms. King has shared that, you know, Lawrence Lynch has worked, you know, basically five to six days a week. They're making tremendous progress. We're cautiously optimistic that the project will be done this fall. It does look like they will be requesting an extension beyond 31st of October, but certainly not because of lack of effort. As Ms. King stated, that we are getting into a season where it does get cooler. It takes longer to warm up. So we're not 100% sure that the actual track surface, the final surface, will be able to be actually sprayed, sprayed this fall. They're going to do everything they can in their power to, to get that done. But it may be postponed until the spring, but certainly continue to provide updates. If, if I may, Mrs. King and Madam Chair, I was just, I was asked a question after our Budget Sub, not after, but since our Budget Sub around this project. And I just wanted to clarify. Somebody had asked that, oh, I, I understand as part of the project, you're going to be placing a turf field in the middle of the track. I just want to make sure that, you know, the, the public understands that that was not part of the project. They were planned to, you know, create that a turf field. Certainly, I mean, you could always use more multipurpose fields, but that was not part of that project. Nor do we intend to do anything in the near future of putting a turf field in there. So I just wanted to clarify in case any members from the school committee were getting those questions as well. That just wasn't part of the project nor was that, you know, something we've discussed about doing anytime soon. There was some question about maybe some of the work that was being done. And the site was being prepared for turf. And I, I don't, I'm just not sure where it was coming from, but that was related to me. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that that was not, that's not within the scope of the work or the scope of the project.
I mean, it'll be a grassy area field that they could use, but it's not going to be like a turf field.
Correct, yes. So it, it really, they're not really doing anything to the field itself. And certainly, there'll have to be some remediation done to the field around the edges where they've dug up. But there, there was no, really, part of that plan was not to, you know, redo the field per se. So there really won't be any significant changes to the field as it was prior when it was being used for soccer and some of the track events. So it'll just go back to that. We will have, you know, the ability to use it for obviously other sports. But we don't, because it is grass, we don't want to overuse it because then we'll end up losing that field as well.
Yes, thank you for updating on that. And I think we should also, as you did for us at the Budget Subcommittee, update folks, if the weather doesn't cooperate, when can tennis and track expect to use their new facility? So that it's out there and everyone's heard it. Oh, that, I, I was giving you the option.
When will be the option?
Oh. At least the first half.
At least the first half of the season.
You're suggesting I share that with you? I'm sorry, Mr. Fitzgibbons. Yes, well, obviously, cautiously optimistic that it'll all be done this fall and we'll be able to use it right away for the spring season. You know, what they consider spring and what we may consider spring, I, I guess is really, you know, two different timelines in the construction world. They typically go in April 1 as the start of spring. But, you know, if, if temperatures are warmer in March, they could certainly dry. They could certainly complete some of this work if we have to go to the spring. If not, it could be April into May, which means then that, you know, we're looking at, you know, midway through the season, towards the end of the season for both the outdoor track teams and the tennis teams to use those. But, you know, I will continue to provide updates. I think, you know, obviously, I have a private, a better picture at the November meeting as to where we're going to be, just because temperatures will change pretty significantly from now. Until then, we'll have a better understanding of where we're at. But to your point, I will just make sure I keep rereading to the, the public at large that it is all weather dependent and there is a possibility that it may not be concluded this year. Exactly, yes.
Any other questions?
Mrs. King?
Thank you, Mr. Powers.
Regarding base program, as you know, we've had continued discussions about the base program and that revolving account. In the spring, we did have some discussions as that account was in the red. So we've been continuing to look at that, how we can kind of make corrections to that. Ms. Rosemary Bell, the new Base Director and Superintendent Powers, presented information at our meeting on the base program revolving account, revenue and expenses for September 2023. We're still currently in the negative in that account, but it's much better. But registrations and hirings were still in process, so we did not have a clear understanding of what the revenue versus expenses were in actuality. It was still too fluid. So because of that, we could not really make a decision one way or the other as to if we needed to make any price increases, registration fees or minimum registration days, which were all kind of things that we had discussed to kind of remediate that and make sure that account is not going into the red. So based on that, we did ask the business office to get us some more information. I'll be in touch with Ms. Babalola about that. Mr. Fitzgibbons had some things that he wanted. Mr. Fitzgibbon's had some things that he wanted to go over too about that. So, this was continued to the next budget meeting, so no action was taken at that time. We did approve, I'm sorry.
Pause there, if anyone has questions on that.
We did approve minutes of September 11th, 2023, and the last item that we discussed was the fiscal year 2024 budget report, which Ms. Beblola mostly had gone over. Just as she does at this quarterly one at our budget meeting, she does go over the budget report month to month to see if there was anything that she's currently looking at, any accounts that line items that we need to keep an eye on, and that the budget is currently frozen at this time. So, we're in good shape right now and will continue to look at that in the future. And that concludes my budget, Subcommittee.
Next on the agenda is the MASC resolutions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, I will be attending the MASC joint conference November 8 through November 10 in Hyannis. I am the designate for the delegate on the Wednesday, November 8 meeting. Each school committee has one delegate that attends this. We'll be voting on the floor, there are eight resolutions that are proposed this year by the resolution committee. These resolutions are proposed by either school committees or the resolution committee of MASC. They are non-binding. They're kind of, I look at it like they're giving the charge as to their subcommittee for the year on what school districts across Massachusetts want their MASC focus to be on for the year. So, we do vote on them as a delegate, and anything that passes, that is what they take to the state legislature to advocate for. As I said, they're non-binding. I have given my resolution recommendations, how I would like to vote on behalf of the committee. When I get there, it is very often that they may be withdrawn, they may be amended on the floor, they may be broken up into several if that seems more appropriate. So, I can come back at the next meeting and let you know what the findings were at that time as well. I did give it in my packet, I'm not going to read them all. If there's any questions on them, I can answer that. Otherwise, I would like to make a motion for a vote of consensus to approve my recommendations as delegate, and to further allow me as a delegate to revise my vote on the floor based upon any further information and/or amendments that I may receive at that time.
A motion to me, Mrs. King, and second by Mr. Dolan, discussion, questions for Mrs. King.
So, I was wondering, some of the recommend, most of the recommendations I'm in agreement with, but there's some of them that I wanted to have some discussions on to see if, if your recommendation would be open to changing them based on discussions.
Which one, Mrs. Mainville?
The regional transportation, that's Resolution 3. You wanted to recommend yes, but I'm concerned about charging fees for transportation will be unfair to students that are low-income. I can see a family opting out of the fee and thinking that they'll take their children, but then having attendance for low-income students get affected just because they're not able to pay for that fee. And as I listen to the provisions provided to families that are, kids that are out of district, it feels to me that the low-income families that are beyond that 1.5 mile will be the only group of family and students that are penalized.
So, as I read the resolution as presented, which this was one, I attended a learning lunch from MASC that kind of went over them all, and we kind of, what was the thought? This was proposed by one of the school districts. This would give the option, it wouldn't be, and honestly, I doubt that this will go through, if I'm being honest, if they haven't funded us fully anyway, but my thought on this was it would give us an option. It's not a mandate that you must charge a fee, but it would give school districts an option to be able to if they, down the line, were facing financial hardships. So, it wouldn't be that we for sure had to charge, or what the fee would be either. This was one that was much debated, so I don't even know if this would go through or if it may be changed, and split, as I said, as well.
Are there other questions or concerns about this?
I had another question. So, the observation around the DE and I as well, wanted to have that be changed to a yes.
So, I'm sorry, I thought you were, go ahead. So, unfunded mandates barely ever pass MASC resolutions, and I feel strongly about not voting yes on unfunded mandates. I love Ms. Arios as one of our coordinators, and what she has done for the district is amazing. I have been with her at the MASC conference as well and seen her network and talk to people, and we are one of the very few districts in Massachusetts that has a person designated for DER. So, I would not ever want to give up that position since we fought so hard to get it. However, an unfunded mandate from the state, what if we were in financial hardships? What if we wanted to combine that position with a different position? What if we wanted to somehow change that? This allowing one unfunded mandate is a slippery slope, and that's the only reason I put no for that one, that was mine.
Mrs. King, I wonder, Mrs. Mainville, I don't know if you have other questions, does it, and I don't know what's, does it make sense to go through and vote on these, like number one?
We can. Also being, that being said, they may 100% change.
Right, no, I understand, I understand now.
But that's fine, if you want to do one by one, we can.
It just, it may be, I don't know if that makes sense to the committee, or it gives some more options instead of voting them as the, as a whole, but to vote on them one by one, where are there?
If I may, although I see where you're heading, where you're going with that, I just, just because if we change and we say Resolution 4 should be yes, that doesn't mean when it comes to the floor of Delegate Assembly that Mrs. King will be forced to vote that way. I think that that's because we are giving her the latitude to represent us at that time when, and I was delegate for a couple of years, where people frankly start screaming at each other at that Delegate Assembly, and these change, and to Mrs. King's point, people make amendments, there's amendments on the floor, the whole bit, so I'm concerned that if the expectation is, if we vote to say yes on, again, hypothetically, Resolution 3 with regional transportation, we say yes, and Mrs. King gets there, and there is a glaring reason for us not to vote yes, that she'd be tied to that. So, I just, I'm, I'm a little hesitant. Again, all of these are non-binding, but I, I think we need to give Mrs. King that latitude that, that the delegate would normally see.
Mr. Damarino?
And just to kind of echo what Mr. Dolan's saying, even to get a consensus vote here on all of them, then, you know, I don't think we should take a vote on it, and what, if we're entrusting Mrs. King to fully represent us, I think that she's been doing this and going to this conference for years, that we should have the full faith and credit with her, that she'll make the right decision and just be fine.
Mr. Fitzgibbon?
Yeah, I was going to actually bring that exact point that Mr. Damarino brought up, is given Mr. Dolan's explanation of being a delegate for us, representing us, representative of the representatives, if you will, then I don't even, I thank you for bringing forward the idea of having consensus, but I don't think we need to have a vote on it at that point.
That's fine, in the past, some years we have, some years we haven't. I can withdraw my motion, and I, as the delegate, it's my duty to vote anyway, but I kind of wanted the committee to have a sense of what they were and what my thoughts were and why, but I can withdraw my motion, that would be fine.
Mr. Dolan, withdraw a second.
Yeah, I would withdraw a second. Could I just suggest that you come back with a report afterwards, to say what happened and how, how the vote turned out, and why people thought the way they did on one side versus the other, to give us a good sense of what went on?
Yeah, no, that was my, in November.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I know you wouldn't do it, I just wanted to say it out loud.
Yes.
Are there, then are other comments or questions on these resolutions? I understand you had a couple, are there others?
Just a quick question for you, I think, I think it's the, I think I know the answer, but I want to double check. If we have any concerns about them, we can lobby our representative up until the time of the mass school committee meeting, and, you know, say, "Hey, you know, this is why I think this way," and I think Rachel would be more than amenable to hearing out any reasonable concerns.
Yes, yes.
Individually, people should reach out or even if Mrs. King expressed their concerns or challenges, support whatever it is around some of these. And again, knowing that the wording in some of these may have to change between what they are tonight and what they will be in the future.
Okay, thanks, bye. Where's my report?
Next on the agenda is policy, Mr. Damarino.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, first up is the long-awaited JEB entrance age policy. This initially was supposed to be on the agenda back in August, however, it was confusion between JEB and EB, which was tabled for further review committee last month. The version with the corrections was unfortunately not in our packet, and as such, we tabled it, and as such, it has been provided for tonight's meeting. And with that, I'd like to move to the first reading of JEB entrance age.
So moved, second?
Motion, well, motion was made by Mr. Damarino and second by Mr. Fitzgibbon, sorry. I do have a question, discussion for discussion, is, are we moving to waive the first reading? Are we approving this? Because we actually already did the first reading of this.
So, we did approve a version of this right of the changing of the guard, if I may say.
Right.
And then, at the request of a school committee member, we as the new policy committee took a second look at it and did make some revisions.
Were they substantial changes or were they more housekeeping? Because if they're more housekeeping, then you can approve it.
So, the first was, we took out grade one out of there and just had this being more for kindergarten. It was also, we removed taking, what is it, throughout their education. This was trying to boil it down based upon recommendations of Ms. Mainville, and also consulting with Mr. Powers about what we, you know, the district is trying to do with this policy. So, I would say that based upon those changes, I would go where we moved a little, first, removing first grade, I would say it's more substantial than just housekeeping.
Other comments or questions?
So, if I may, I, I think we can, we have the ability to waive the need for a second reading. So, if I may, if you're amenable to it, I'd like to waive that, this way this gets passed and, because we are doing this now. I think my concern is, if this is not approved tonight, it falls back to the old, will be changed. So, I think it moves us to waive that second reading and pass it tonight.
So, procedurally, couldn't we waive the first reading tonight, and make a motion to waive the second reading, and then vote?
Correct, yes.
In that order?
Correct, yes.
Wave, wave, motion to?
Correct, yes. Because the, you waive the need to read the policy, which would be the first, and then the second, and then, yes, we would be able to approve tonight.
So, there's a motion on the floor to waive the first reading by Mr. Damarino and Mr. Fitzgibbon, second. Any other discussion about to waive the first reading? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion passes. Now, is there, I will entertain a motion to waive the second reading?
So moved. Second?
Motion's been made by Mr. Dolan and second by Mr. Damarino, any discussion about that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
So, with that, I would like to move to approve policy JEB entrance age as presented.
Second?
Motion's been made by Mr. Damarino and second by Mr. Dolan, any discussion about that?
Just a quick one, so no one thinks we're doing it in Massachusetts State Legislature on any of them. The whole, the whole point to Mr. Dolan's, when I know he can speak for himself, but the, it's, we're, we're doing, we're doing this now, it's the right policy to have, there's no need to just tie it up in bureaucracy for another month and have to, in violation of a policy, we don't even want to have, so let's just get it going.
Any other discussion about this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, motion passes.
So, the policy committee held its monthly subcommittee meeting on October 11th. The meeting was called to order at 7:01. We had been handed several policies from MASC to review, the first of which being EFE Civil Rights Complaint Policy for Child Nutrition Programs, as it's new, as required by the USDA Food and Nutrition Services. We discussed this, and how this was being impacted by the state budget this year, again, correcting lunches to students, and as that's a budget-by-budget item that was explained that, you know, also that this is coming from the USDA. One other thing to note about this, policies when MSC, MF, yeah, MASC sends us policies to review, they are brought through their legal counsel, they sign off on it before sending them to us. So, we, we do look at it that way. Also, if we feel that there's any substantial changes to the wording, we do refer to our counsel, Tony Emerson. With that, we did approve EFE Civil Rights Complaint Policy for Child Nutrition Programs as it was presented to us. As such, I would love to move to read the first reading of policy EFE Civil Rights Complaint Policy for Child Nutrition Programs.
Second?
Motion made by Mr. Damarino and second by Mr. Dolan, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
The next policy that we took a look at is combining of IGA and IGD, Curriculum Development and Adoption. We did, again, we had discussed about, you know, the fact that legal counsel at state level has already reviewed this. There was, we've been making several changes to this that we felt was, would actually kind of benefit our district. of benefit our district. However, we did ask Attorney Emerson to take a look at this prior to tonight. He did take a look at it, his response, well, it doesn't go against what the state's trying to do, he didn't indicate that there, it, it needed to be cleaned up, the wording needed to be cleaned up a little bit as there was some redundancies. So as such, I would like to move to have this tabled so the policy committee can in up those redundancies and have a more concise policy.
Second.
Motion been made by, uh, motion been made by Mr. Dan Marino and second by Mr. Dolan to table this, to send it back to policy. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
We also, oh, I, that's just the ones I have, but there's other stuff coming down the pipeline, but I just wanted to make.
Oh, sure, heads up, sure.
So there was another policy that we were asked to review on the state and that's I M G A service animals in school. We have a similar policy already in place. We define service animals, there appears to be quite a, quite a bit that is going to be redundant between the policy that we already have. Since we already have a policy in place, we decided to ask committee to table this so that we can have a more side-by-side review of what is redundant, so we're not just having duplicative policies just because MASC is telling us that they want us to do this. It was noted by several individuals in the subcommittee that, including Mr. Powers, that our policy kind of hits on all the points and we just want to make sure that we, we were not missing anything, so that was tabled. Also, we also, because of the time constraints, because the subcommittee before us ran a little late, we tabled the superintendent recruitment and selection policy that we had agreed to take up and create. So that will also be coming down the pipeline probably next meeting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Dan Marino. Next on the agenda is long range planning, Mr. Dolan.
Yes, Madam Chair. The long range planning committee met on October 11th at five thirty in the superintendent's conference room. Mr. Dan Marino, myself, Ms. Davenport and Ms. Mayneville are on that committee. We were joined by Mr. Powers, Ms. Babalola, Ms. Barry, Mr. Kilgore, Mr. Schontz and Natalie, who I thought I could say her name, but now I know I can't.
Set it, Rubens.
Sorry, sorry Natalie. We reviewed the technology capital plan and made some minor edits. The plan has been shared with you tonight, some of the minor edits were the file name, the title page, adding a column that indicates where it falls, where the project falls in the student success plan and adding a column for measurable outcomes. So with that, Madam Chair, a motion to approve the capital plan with those housekeeping edits as presented this evening.
Second.
Um, motion's been made by Mr. Dolan and second by Mrs. Mayne, was it Mrs. Mayneville? Nope, Ms. Davenport, sorry, couldn't hear. Any discussion?
So the plans as they are right now doesn't reflect those changes, are we voting, are we voting for them to change in the future? Because they haven't been updated yet.
Correct, they, Mr. Schontz has not been here to update the plan, so, but he, he did make note of what we asked him to change and, and those are what I would consider, those housekeeping things, adding those columns. So with our vote, we are voting to accept the capital plan with those suggested edits.
And one of the edits was to make sure that the completed projects were, that the amounts were updated as well, is that still cut though?
Yes, yes. Sorry, I missed that one.
That was technology, right?
Yes, the technology.
Um, other questions, any discussion questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes.
Uh, we also reviewed the capital investment plan with Mr. Kilgore, the plan with some, again, some minor edits, updating the index on the cover page, the, I should say, the index definitions on the cover page, completed projects, again, reflecting the actual costs, providing the annual cost for each school, which the capital plan did, I'm sorry, the technology plan did, but we wanted to carry that over to the capital plan as well and adding a column, again, to, adding two columns, one for measurable outcomes and the other to indicate where on the student success plan, capital plan fit. So to, a motion to approve the capital investment plan with the formatting or housekeeping edits as presented this evening.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Dolan and second by Mr. Dan Marino, any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
Uh, and our next meeting will be held on November 8th at five thirty in the superintendent's conference room.
Thank you, Mr. Dolan. Oh, Mr. Dolan, keep going.
Safety and security meeting, the, the group met on September 29th at nine thirty in the morning in the superintendent's conference room. In attendance were district administration, building principals, Bridgewater Fire, Bridgewater Police Representatives, Rainham Fire and Rainham Police Representatives. The district continues to upgrade cameras at several of our schools, facility upgrades are also being done, these include lighting projects. The district did receive a ninety-two thousand dollar Safe Schools grant, which has been focusing on our radio systems. Ms. Hart provided, our director of student services, provided a program overview for each of our schools, so our public safety partners were aware of what was going on and who was in those buildings, or who were in our buildings during the day. And then Ms. Grenon gave, Ms. Grenon, our district lead nurse, presented the EMS considerations for our public safety partners again, so they had a, a full picture of our student population.
Um, questions for Mr. Dolan?
Got a quick question. Um, that radio systems project, is it, I didn't see it on the cap, the IT plan or capital plan, is it just, I, I wanted to understand the difference.
Yep, so the, 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 it wouldn't be because it's grant funded. Capital plan is, are those projects that are built either back to the town because it affects one of their buildings or built back to both towns because it impacts the high school, which is their only regional building? Grants are not included in capital planning because there's, we're not using capital funds to appropriate or to use to, to get those radios.
Because in some cases, the, if you don't get the money from the towns, then grants are, are sought, but in this case, this project only initiated once you have the grant, it wasn't something that, it was there and then you backed into a grant.
Mr. Powers, I'll defer to you on that.
Absolutely, so as Mr. Dolan stated, we're using this for several reasons, one of them being the upgrades to some of our portable radios that are, as well as some of the facility upgrades, Mr. Dolan spoke about the camera system, so we do have the ability, depending on, you know, the funding sources from the towns, if those camera projects come in more than what we anticipated, we could offset that with some of that grant funding, same thing with some of the facility projects that Mr. Kilgore is doing, some of the dorm replacement projects, some of the security upgrades, if the capital money that was originally allotted for that does not cover the full cost because of, you know, inflation and supply, supply and demand, then we could apply some of those, the grants to that.
And Mr. Powers, historically, you know, in the past couple of years, we, we actually got a, a, quite a bit of grant money, especially in IT, so things that were on the capital plan, we actually moved off the capital plan because grant money covered them.
Yes.
So they may at one point be on a capital or IT plan, but then they come off because of grant money that comes, becomes available. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Dolan. Community liaison, Mrs. Mayneville and Mr. Fitzgibbon. Mr. Fitzgibbon.
I'll make mine short and sweet, nothing from me tonight, I was.
Thank you, Ms. Mayneville.
This month I received communication via phone calls, Facebook and email from a total of nine parents and three community members. Six parents and one community member voiced concerns about the communication around the resignation of the middle school vice principal. Parents were directed to reach out to the superintendent with a C C to the school committee using the school committee email address. Of those who reached out to the superintendent and school committee, all indicated that they received a timely response from the superintendent. Two parents shared their concerns about the persistent and resolved bullying of their child. Both, both were unfamiliar with the DESI complaint resolution system or the district's incident bullying report. Links were provided to both parents as well as encouraged for them to continue working through the district's communication chain. One of the two parents indicated that they had hired a lawyer to address their concerns. One community member reached out about the district's wellness policy, they suggested that the school committee may want to gain a better understanding of the school's wellness policy via special presentation during our school committee meetings. One parent brought to our attention that the arrest of the blogger behind Turtle Boy and their disappointment of some of the school committee members' reaction or lack of reaction to the article written about them. One parent called to indicate concerns about the financial implications associated with the litigation of a case involving their claims that their First Amendment right to report government officials and the performance of their duties was violated. I included in my notes the link to that case. And then finally, one community member recommended an enrichment program experienced for eighth and ninth graders or upper grades in BR about historic women. They attended the event via the senior center and found the experience of the performance to be well done and they highly recommended it and I've included the link to that performer in my notes as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayneville. Moving on, um, next is new business. At this point, I will entertain a motion to approve the payroll warrants dated September 21st and October 5th, 2023.
So moved, second.
Motion been made by Mrs. King and second by Mr. Fitzgibbon, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Discussion, motion passes.
Okay.
Come back in? Um, next is approval of the Bridgewater Ram Regional High School graduation date as of May 31st, 2024, and I believe that news was in your pocket. I will entertain a motion to approve the date of May 31st, 2024 for. High school, Mrs., Mr. Dolan, um, motion been made by Mr. Dolan and second by Mrs. King, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes. Is there anyone left for public comment? Thank you, if there are left in the audience. So I'm not gonna read that, announcements, um, I actually don't, how many announcements? Does anyone else have any announcements?
I have an announcement.
Sure.
Some of you may know that I've been receiving, along with other school committee members, persistent and malicious emails from the former superintendent. On Friday, my concerns got even more elevated and I was granted an order of harassment prevention from a judge. I will include a copy of that, what it says that he cannot continue to reach out or come within one hundred feet of me. On the 27th, I go back to court where he will be invited to defend his, his behavior, but I wanted to let you all know that I do have that harassment prevention order and I'll provide a copy.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayneville. Any other announcements?
Motion to adjourn?
Um, motion's been made to adjourn, we'll have a second.
Second.
Um, motion by Mr. Fitzgibbon, the second by Mrs., Martelli, sorry, it's late, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I hope not, motion passes, meeting adjourned, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.